You're live, Matt.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and call to order the Jeffersonville City Council meeting for Tuesday, September the 8th, five after seven at this point. We'll start with a roll call, please. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
President.
Councilperson Burns?
Present.
Councilperson Harris?
Here.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Here.
Councilperson Croft?
Here.
Councilperson Webb?
Present.
Councilperson Owen?
Here.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Here.
Councilperson Ellis?
He is not going to make it this evening.
Okay, let the record reflect that we have seven council members via phone and we've got Council President Owen and Councilperson Croft in Council and Mayor's conference room.
Mr. Ellis reached out today and said that he had some dental work done and he wouldn't be able to make it this evening. So we hope speedy recovery for him. We have minutes from the regular proceedings of August the 17th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Maples, second by Mr. Croft.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right. Claims to, I'm sorry, approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agendas presented. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Mr. Maples, you didn't unmute.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins? Councilperson Hawkins?
Looks like we may have lost him.
He looks, he looks like he's frozen, yeah. There he is. I heard an "aye."
Eight zero.
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins, you want to check the connection there?
I, I don't know if I'm lagging or not.
That's what it sounds like, yeah. But we got you, we're good. Eight zero for that one. Claims to be approved, we have civil city claims in the amount, in the amount of $1,025,127.66. Were there any changes, Heather?
No, I have no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. Burns.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Sir?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
I heard it that time.
Did I?
I think so, yeah.
And then it's eight zero, thank you. You get better years than me.
Aye.
We have parks claims in the amount of $85,850.57.
Yes, sir, no changes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. Croft.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you all.
All right. Report of the clerk?
I know sometimes the packets might be a little large, so I'll be happy, I know Councilperson Ellis and you have two, came in and got a packet. If anybody needs a packet for me to, you know, create a hard copy of, I'd be happy to, just contact me and I'll make sure that I get that for you.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Unfinished business, we have Chad Reichel, 2020 OR 38, this is the original revisions to Article 4, which is the zoning districts and standards and land use matrix. We tabled this in the past. It made, it made its way back onto the agenda, however, there are, if you'll see under new business, there's a new set of revisions that are to be presented later down the agenda, so unless someone has a motion, we'll let this die for lack of...
Well, either that or just vote it down because it's technically, it's tabled, I mean, I'll defer to Larry on that, but probably need some action on it and just to get rid of it.
I would suggest, I would suggest that you just vote on it that way.
Just vote it down, just vote it down and we'll, then we'll deal with the new one.
I know that this is, this was, this contained some language that we didn't want to see pertaining to, I think, clinics and things of that sort. So if someone did make a motion to approve, hopefully they would be doing so knowing that we would vote this down.
Yeah, I mean, you can make, you can make, you can make, you can make a motion with, for purposes of defeating the ordinance, so a motion to approve for purposes of defeating the ordinance. Some action's got to be taken, otherwise it's, it's going to continue to be on the table and you got to bring, and the clerk's only connected, continue to put it, put it on the agenda, which...
I'm making a motion to do it.
Have to make a motion, take it off the table, right?
Correct.
Well, y'all, y'all don't normally do that, but yeah, technically, yes, under Robinson's order, you're correct, Dustin, yes.
Motion to take it off the table.
Aye.
Donnie withdrew his original motion, there's a motion for Mr. White to remove this from the table, seconded by Mr. Hawkins.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins? Eight zero.
Right.
Now, now you need a motion to, motion would be to approve the ordinance with the intention to vote no or reject it.
So somebody makes a motion to approve it, somebody seconds it, and then if you all aren't going to pass it, just vote it.
Just vote no.
Just vote no.
Make a motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Paris and a second by Mr. Hawkins to approve 2020 OR 38 with the understanding that it will fail. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Mr. White, you're muted.
No.
Councilperson Burns?
No.
Councilperson Harris?
No.
Councilperson Maple?
No.
Croft?
No.
Councilperson Webb?
No.
Councilperson Owen?
No.
Councilperson Hawkins?
No.
Eight zero.
Zero eight. Right.
Correct.
Zero to eight.
Okay, so that motion fails. All right, we'll move on. Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 40, which is an ordinance of transfer within the same department.
There's no changes on this one.
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion, Mr. Maple, second, Mr. Burns, to approve on the final. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right. We'll move on to new business. Chad Reichel, 2020 OR, will this be 41?
Yes.
41. With our amended revisions to Article 4 and Article 7 and Article 14. Mr. Reichel, you can go ahead, but you are muted.
Thank you, Matt. Members of the council, before you, we have revisions to several articles of the zoning code as they relate to drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers. These changes had been brought to you on, at the August 3rd council meeting where they were tabled for further discussion. Following that meeting, Les Merkley and I sat down with Dustin White and talked about some of the changes that he felt needed to be made, and we have made a couple changes to the ordinance. We brought that back to the Plan Commission for approval and are bringing those changes back to you tonight with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. So, in essence, the ordinance looks exactly the same as it was brought to you at the August 3rd meeting with the following corrections. We redefined the definition of substance abuse treatment center outpatient to indicate more specifically that patients are generally provided with counseling services only, and that there's no treatment of drugs, no treatment with drugs at these clinics. We have then removed outpatient facilities as a special exception in the neighborhood commercial zone district as that zone district is primarily interspersed within residential neighborhoods, and we felt that that wasn't really going to work out very well. So, overall, we feel that this proposed ordinance revision gives us a broader clarity around the types of treatment facilities and where they can and cannot locate in the community. In almost all cases, drug and alcohol rehabilitation clinics will have to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special exception, which means that anyone coming and proposing a drug and alcohol rehabilitation clinic will have to go through our process, the neighbors will have to be notified, and they will have to come before a hearing for us. So, those are the changes in front of you tonight. Please let me know if you have any further questions.
In those notices to the neighbors, it will specify that it's for, the application is for drug or alcohol treatment?
Correct.
Mr. White, were you satisfied with the discussion that was had?
Yes, and the changes, yes.
Does anybody else have any questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Webb and a second by Mr. Paris. Is anything further? Okay. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye, am I there?
Yep, I got you that time.
Eight zero.
All right. We've got the 41, and now we've got Chad again, 2020 OR 42, which is going to be rezoning on property located at 3715 East 10th Street for a planned development to a planned development.
Correct. Nicely's Development, the folks behind the new Kroger and the associated development on that parcel are asking to change their, the language in their planned unit development, which is effectively a rezoning, so changing from one planned unit development to new language in another planned unit development. So, no essential change in zoning district, the language that they are changing revolves around signage. Currently, the zoning for that site allows them to have three 20-foot tall signs along 10th Street, one at each of the intersections. They have come to us and are asking for three 30-foot signs as a couple other centers here in town, namely Jeffersonville Town Center on Veterans Parkway and the Gateway Center that we're developing at 10th and Spring, all have 30-foot signs. His, their take on this is that, you know, they are building 250,000 square feet of commercial space, some of which is actually going to be behind the Kroger and a little hard to see from the road, so they're asking for the additional signage. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Reichel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Maples and a second by Mr. Webb. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
Aye.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right. Next, we have Les Merkley, 2020 OR 43, which is amending the Jeffersonville Municipal Code.
Yes, yes, this is, Larry Wallace is on the, on the call, he can explain this more. There are two ordinances that are coming from his office to update our code in reference to building permits and licenses for electrical work and et cetera. Larry, you want to explain what is in these two ordinances, you're going to know more about it than I am.
Yeah, the one's electrical license for independent, anybody coming in has to be a licensed contractor to do work. We're getting too many homeowners and so-called electricians working, trying to do the electric work, it's been very dangerous. We're having to run back several times. They're wanting us to tell us how to do it. I think this is best if we just require electrical license for any electrical work done in the city of Jefferson.
As the code's written now, Larry, does it allow the homeowner to do their own electrical work?
We did have an affidavit, they could sign and do it themselves, but that's not been working very well at all, especially with schools, trying to hook these swimming pools up by themselves and it's just very dangerous. So, I think this would be a good move to make.
So, if you have to keep, as it is now, if you have to keep coming back, are you, do they get charged every time you come back?
In some circumstance, they do. If, if they keep doing the same thing over and over, we, we use a little press in there and try not to wear them out, but if we get called back three or four times, yeah, we start, we start assessing another fee. But they're wanting us to tell them how to do it. Obviously, they don't know how to do it, and so the last couple of years, me and Harold's been stating, you know, if we have to come back the second time, then you have to get a licensed electrician. I believe we'll just state in here they have to get a licensed electrician. They're trying to rewire houses, change panel boxes out, meter bases out, and they, they just don't know enough to be doing it.
Well, I have this pulled up, and help me if I'm misunderstanding, but according to this, if somebody then wants to, when it says devices, is that a light? Like, would that be just a light?
No, switches, receptacles, stuff like that, that'd be permissible, but you're going to rewire a house or put a new electric service up, change a panel out, run a circuit to a swimming pool, then we're just going to require a licensed electrician. But devices, no, that's, they could do that.
Well, because, and again, maybe, this has kind of been legalese, so Larry or Les, you'll pretty jump in, when it says electrical licenses, under A, electrical license is required for all persons performing any installation, alteration of any wiring, devices, panels, equipment.
Scott, where you, Scott, where you at in this?
I'm in Section 150.075. A.
A.
Age one.
If, we talked about this, me and Harold talked about this, we will kind of leave a little bit of discretion there for switches and receptacles.
Well, what we, what we probably ought to do is, is do some clarification or define devices or, or maybe put in there, this, this excludes...
Not to, not to, including but not.
And maybe, maybe what we can do is just pass this on first reading tonight, and maybe I can get with Larry and even you, Scott or whoever, and, and we'll come up with some language. I think you make a good point, Scott, that probably needs to be clarified, so...
I'll get with Harold also.
Yeah, we can, we can, we can, if you just pass it on first reading, we'll try to have something for you at the next meeting to ease those concerns.
That's fine, and I know exactly where, Mr. Walz, I, I know where you're coming from, I understand it, but by not having a clear definition, and this, of course, is why everybody, you know, who's lawyers, but I think we need clarification on the definition of terms, and then I'll be...
No, I agree.
We can do that, yeah.
I agree.
Nice catch, Mr. Hawkins.
There you go, he's a builder.
Well, big bucks.
Do we, Les, we need to move on to the raising of the...
Well, let's, let's, let's go ahead and have them, have them address this ordinance, give it a number, and if, hopefully they'll just pass it on first reading, and then we'll move on to the next ordinance.
Okay.
This is ordinance 2020 OR 43, if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
On what reading, Mr. Hawkins?
On the, well, I can do, just on the first, right, we can do second or third.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that wording on the second, third reading.
The motion to pass 2020 OR 43 on the first reading only by Mr. Hawkins, second by Mr. Croft. Ms. Gill?
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Vice President Maple?
Aye.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
No.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Seven to one.
All right. Next is just amending the permit fees, is that right?
Correct. That's further construction fee for this certificate of occupancy for commercial only. We've been at $25, and we're out there on those million square foot, 700,000 square foot buildings, and for 20, for $35, I think, I just think it's time to reduce, just the commercial fee to 100. There again, we usually end up coming back a time or two.
You're cutting out a little bit, Larry, were you just talking $100 on commercial and leaving the rest?
Yes.
Yes, just commercial.
It's only changing commercial.
It's, like I said, it's, we're charging 25, $35 now, and on those big buildings, it's quite a bit of work.
This will be 2020 OR 44.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second, Scott.
So we're going to motion by Mr. Hawkins to approve on the first reading again?
First and...
And a second. All right, I think I heard you, a motion to go on the first and second reading and second by Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Councilperson White?
Aye.
Councilperson Burns?
Aye.
Councilperson Harris?
Aye.
Councilperson Maple?
No.
Councilperson Croft?
Aye.
Councilperson Webb?
Aye.
Councilperson Owen?
No.
Councilperson Hawkins?
Aye.
All right. Next, we have Heather Metcalf, 2020 OR 45, will be an ordinance of additional appropriation.
Yes, this ordinance actually has to function like an additional appropriation, but it's a reduction to the budgets for the aquatic center, Parks Activity Fund, and for River Stage, and this is just to make sure that because of the revenues that we're not going to receive this year, then we don't overspend in these budgets.
What's the total amount we're reducing, Heather?
Oh, hold on, I don't have that number right handy.
Sorry, they're in different funds, so I guess it really doesn't, we don't have to have a total number. I was just curious.
I'm pulling it up, hold on. The Parks Activity Fund is $174,501.27. The River Stage is $146,509.74.
Okay. Any questions for Heather on those? I think this is a great move to, to make sure we're not putting out any more money than we have to this year. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
We've got a motion, Mr. Burns, and a second, Mr. Hawkins.
I'm not ready.
We approving this on the first and second reading, Mr. Burns?
Yes, sir.
On the first and second reading?
Correct.
Counselperson White?
Aye.
Counselperson Burns?
Aye.
Harris?
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Counselperson Cross?
Aye.
Counselperson Webb?
Aye.
Counselperson Owen?
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Eight zero.
All right, next, Heather Metcalf, twenty twenty O R forty-six.
This is a transfer request from Building Commission for software and hardware and for sanitation department for environmental.
Any questions, comments?
Is that environmental fee for the forty thousand, I'm assuming that's from our increased collection of things that we've been having the last few months? Is that where we're, what we're talking about?
I believe so, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve on the first and second reading. Nobody has any other questions?
Second.
Motion, Mr. Hawkins, for the first and second reading, seconded by Mr. Paris. Ms. Gill?
Counselperson White?
Aye.
Counselperson Burns?
Aye.
Counselperson Harris?
Aye.
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples?
Aye.
Counselperson Cross?
Aye.
Counselperson Webb?
Aye.
Counselperson Owen?
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Eight zero.
Thank you.
All right, that's all I have on the agenda. We'll go to attorney comments. Mr. Merkley?
I have nothing.
Mr. Wilder?
Exactly what Mr. Merkley has, nothing.
All right, that takes us to Department Heads. Mr. Wallace, did you have anything else, sir?
No, I don't, I'm good. I thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Metcalf, anything additional?
I'm good here, thanks.
Ms. Metcalf, what is the date for the advertisement of the budget for our public hearing?
The next meeting, I believe it's the twenty-first. Oh, wait, you said the, the advert-
Date for the public hear-
Yes, the public hearing is on the twenty-first.
When does the advertisement go out?
It needs to be submitted by Thursday.
Okay.
This, this week, Thursday, two days from now.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to council comments. Mr. White?
Thank you. I'd like to give a shout out and thank the Clarksville Town Council. Last year, I believe it was, or maybe in the past two years, the BWI project was voted down three times in the city of Jeffersonville, and it just so turns out that there's a sliver of land behind the hospital on Acres Avenue that's a part of Clarksville that everybody thought was Jeffersonville, where BWI tried to come in under another name to get the same project approved, and specifically Council President Ryan Ramsey and Councilwoman Karen Henderson, Councilwoman Jennifer Voiner, and Councilman Tim Harbride. I'd like to thank them for their votes to deny the change of zoning to allow that project to be put basically in Clay'sburg. And Larry, if you don't mind, if I'm putting you on the spot, then just tell me, we'll talk about it later. We've, we passed, for example, the ordinance amending the zoning code. Can you explain, and I'm, I'm asking this because there are a number of residents in my district that are hurting. There are multiple people arrested, multiple police calls to these homes where the landlords basically don't care. And so, can you explain how, how it is that we can pass a zoning ordinance, changing the zoning code, but we can't, we aren't in a position to pass, if the council had the will to do so, a rental regulation code or ordinance?
Larry, you're muted. So, what I believe right now, Mr. White, is, is that we're in a place where the federal government through, and the state government have engaged themselves in not so much legislation, but executive fiat, where they have put themselves in the place of policymakers of two things specifically to do landlord and tenant relationships, and even in many instances, we'll go as far as mortgagees and mortgagers. I think that right now, you can't enact something that may have some degree of, maybe perceived to be stepping into the narrative that the federal government and the state government has chosen to become a part of until the time that those moratoriums are rescinded. Doesn't mean that you can't put it in place, doesn't mean that the debate can't begin, doesn't mean that you can't pass it, and the effective date obviously would be at a time when, when we're no longer under these executive-type orders.
Okay, I, so if we did something like that, basically, that would be depriving them of their due process because they're hamstrung by the federal government who's preempted us from acting in that way?
That's absolutely it.
Okay, all right.
Due process argument. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the, Mr. White?
That's all I have, Mr. President.
All right, Mr. Burns?
Yeah, our city council appointment to the Parks Authority has resigned due to moving out of area, and I'd like to nominate Scott Hare as our replacement to the Parks Authority.
Second. Was there any other applicants that applied, guys?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Burns, how does Mr. Hare spell his name?
S C O T H A I R E, I believe.
There's a motion by Mr. Burns, and I believe a second by Mr. White, to appoint Scott Hare to replace the appointment from the city council who had to resign due to moving out of the city limits.
That was Josh Clumber.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yes.
I just want to make sure, and you'll, you'll probably be able to refresh my memory further than me looking, when we redid our rules, and this is nothing about Mr. Hare's appointment, I just want to make sure we follow our own rules. When we reworked those, did we address appointments during council comment? It seems like we had that discussion, but I don't remember the outcome of that discussion, and I just want to make sure we follow our own rules. I'm going to vote for Mr. Hare, but I just want to make sure we do it right. Do you recall? Mr. Hawkins, actually-
We have.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
We have actually talked about redoing and revisiting the council's rules, and there was a group of us that met on that. However, we never took action because as soon as we were meeting on that front, the global pandemic hit, and we came to seeing each other on a TV screen every couple of weeks. So, we never actually finalized any of those things, so I don't know that there's anything that specifically lays that out.
I just want to make sure.
Mr. Wilder, did, did you have anything else to add?
That was absolutely what I was going to point out, that you all had those discussions, and then, then March came, and we never, never did.
Okay, is there anything further? Hearing none, Ms. Gill?
Counselperson White?
Aye.
Counselperson Burns?
Aye.
Counselperson Harris?
Aye.
Counselperson Vice President Maples?
No.
Counselperson Cross?
Aye.
Counselperson Webb?
Aye.
Counselperson President Owen?
Aye.
Counselperson Hawkins?
Aye.
Seven to one.
Okay, Mr. Burns, did you have anything else?
Nothing further, thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Maples?
I have no comment.
Sorry, I skipped to Mr. Paris.
Okay, no, no comment.
Mr. Cross?
Yes, I have something. We'll make everybody aware of the situation. We have an outfit here called American Water Resources. They insure water lines. Their letterhead and building looks very similar to Indiana American Water, our water company, but there is no connection. I had two families in my district in the past month that had, well, two months, had waterline breaks, and no local plumbers will work for this outfit. So, anytime you won't work for an insurance company, that should tell you something. Well, anyway, the last family, their water ran for twenty-seven days. Precious commodity we have, water running down the street. They finally got out to the local game, it took about two hours to fix it. Well, needless to say, their water bill was close to three-hundred, the sewer bill four-something. Well, I went to the water company, they were very nice, got it reverted back to their average bill, as did our sewer department. I did that for both families, but I just want to make everybody aware, this company is deceptive at best, and people need to be very careful with that. I have my waterline insurance through my homeowner's insurance, and they want you to think it's a water company, and their, their letterhead looks almost exactly to Indiana American Water and their American Water Resources. So, I just want everybody to be aware of that. If you got that, good luck. That's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Webb?
No comment.
Mr. Hawkins?
Uh, no comment.
I think I may have skipped Mr. Reichel over, under Department Heads. Chad, did you have anything else to add?
No, I'm good, thanks.
I apologize for that. I, I'm looking at the, the cluster, and I missed you.
Yeah, no worries.
Just a couple of quick things. Bill already hit the parks appointment that we needed to fill. As Heather mentioned, the budget is going to get advertised this week. Also, I spoke with the street commissioner, Kevin Moreland, today. He mentioned to me that they would be going before the Board of Works here shortly on some purchases of new equipment that the council appropriated money for at the beginning of the year. They have some worn-out trucks that they need to get replaced as soon as possible. I think they're going to be requesting the Board of Works approve some, some contracts to replace those trucks very, in the very near future. He wanted to make sure that we were okay with spending that money that we appropriated in a special appropriation at the beginning of the year. I told him absolutely, because they, that's equipment that we've sat down and talked about at length with both streets and sanitation at the beginning of the year, and, and, you know, those are one-time purchases that we know that we need to make sure that our citizens have the, the equipment out clearing the streets once, once that time comes. Also, I think you'll notice that the Union Gameyard in downtown Jeffersonville should be opening for a soft opening this week. I'm glad Mr. White didn't steal my thunder on that one. That's exciting that, to see that building come together over the last few months. I think it's going to make a great addition right there next to the parlor, and hopefully everybody will be able to socially distance and enjoy that here short order, in short order. If there's nothing else, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
Don't make a problem.
We are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.